Good evening. I see everybody's here, and I hope you felt welcomed as you came in tonight. Police Captain Chris Ruse was our greeter along with Leisure Services Director Robert Carrollon. It is 7:00 PM on April 6, 2021, and we will call the meeting to order. We are on our first regular City Commission meeting for the month of April in the Commission chambers, still socially distanced. And I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, our Recording Secretary Cassidy Ritz. Down in front, we have our new City Clerk Kate Settle. Kate, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us. And then our City Attorney Randy Hayes, our City Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Our City Commissioner from Zone 2 Troy Kent.
Hey, everybody.
To my left and your right, we have our City Commissioner and Deputy Mayor, representing Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis. And Zone 4 Commissioner Rob Littleton. Our Assistant City Manager with us tonight Claire Whitley. And for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, please silence your cellphones. Make sure they're on silent at this time. Take just a moment to do that before we get into the meeting. And at this time, after silencing your cellphones, we will rise for the invocation given by Evangelist John J. Sealan from Bethel Ministries, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. King David, King of Judah and Israel, pray to the Lord. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and forget not all his benefits. Who forgives all your iniquities? Who heals all your diseases? Who redeems your life from destruction? Who crowns you with loving kindness and tender mercies? Who satisfies your mouth with good things? So that your youth is renewed like that of the eagles? Father, we thank you for our country that we love so much. Lord, we say, in God we trust. In this country, Father. We thank you also for the city of Ormond Beach and these precious leaders. Our mayor, Assistant Mayor, and also Commissioners, Engineers, and all the leaders that you've appointed over us, Father. Lord, we lift up our city to you, our nation to you, our state to you, Father. For us to walk with you in thankfulness, in gratitude of hearts, asking you to forgive us of all of our sins and cleanse us from all our iniquities. And Lord, let these leaders and their families and all of our families be blessed today in the city of Ormond Beach. And as they seek your wisdom, Father, I pray that you grant them your wisdom and understanding, and above all, protection and preservation for all of us in this city. We love you and praise you. We ask it in your precious holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if we could have Jim Cameron come up and bring up whoever you'd like to bring with you. We've got a presentation for Jim, who is a very special person in Volusia County Government. Whereas, Jim Cameron is Senior Vice President of Government Relations for the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce and is responsible for coordinating lobbying activities between Chamber members and local, state, and congressional officials. Jim sees himself as a facilitator, not a salesman. He makes introductions and allows the municipalities, businesses, and lawmakers to communicate their needs or issues directly. And whereas Jim grew up in Montgomery, Alabama, and majored in History and Political Science at the University of Alabama, after college, Jim worked for the Calhoun County Chamber of Commerce in Anniston, Alabama. And in 1983, Jim left Alabama and moved to Florida, where he started working at the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce on April 18. Jim and his wife Rita live in Daytona Beach and enjoy their time living in our beautiful community. And whereas Jim has been engaged in issues in Ormond Beach, including facilitating the Ormond Beach City Commission's involvement in Volusia Days every year, Jim is known to attend City Commission meetings where he details upcoming events held by the Daytona Regional Chamber or inquires where the city needs assistance. More recently, Jim assisted in accelerating millions of dollars in FEMA reimbursement funds to the city of Ormond Beach from Hurricane Matthew. He's also serving our community through his involvement on boards for the Volusia Flagler Continuum of Care, United Way of Volusia and Flagler Counties, and Junior Achievement. Jim has many accomplishments, including helping to bring Sunrail to Volusia County and the Hard Rock Hotel to Daytona Beach. Working with Space Florida to recruit aerospace companies and addressing the area's homeless population, Jim is very focused on the issues and sees them through to the end result. And whereas Jim will be retiring at the end of April 2021 after 38 years of service to the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce, he plans to continue his calling by assisting individuals and making connections as a government relations consultant. People that know Jim indicate that everything he does is in the best interests of the residents of Volusia County. We will miss Jim's southern charm at the City Commission meetings, but hope that he'll visit us from time to time. Based on all of that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, on behalf of this entire Commission, do proclaim April 6, 2021, as a day to recognize Jim Cameron in the city of Ormond Beach and encourage all residents to join me in a roll tide and in wishing Jim Cameron the best in his well-deserved retirement.
(Applause)
(Inaudible).
We appreciate that. Hold this up here.
You look great.
We're gonna get behind you.
All right. Great. Thank you.
That's for you, too.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly appreciate that there.
Thank you for all you've done. Yep. Say a few words. Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for this nice award and recognition, though. And also, just the opportunity to say, I mean, how much fun I've had coming up here over the years. I was saying earlier, though, I mean, I remember when Charles Bailey was mayor up here, and John Lemkeul was City Manager back at the time, and that was starting in 1983, when I've come to y'all's meetings and such. And been coming to them ever since. But, and also, I wanted to say how much fun we've had during events like Volusia Days at the Capitol and other events around the county. And probably more so recently, and some of y'all might remember, across the street over here that day, when, at the time, Governor Rick Scott came over here to Whole Seafood that day. And I mean, that was a lot of fun having everybody there. But again, appreciate this and look forward to seeing you more so. I will keep coming to Commission meetings, start consulting business on May 1. So I'll be here just as much, though. So looking forward to working with you that much more so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
And next, I'll ask Evelyn Robicini to come forward, and we have a proclamation for National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas crime can leave a lasting impact on any person regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system that responds that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. With the unwavering support of their communities and victim service providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, their loss, fear, anger, and hope without fear of judgment, and will feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as supports thriving communities, engaging a broader array of healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all the victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the city of Ormond Beach is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 18 through 24, 2021, as National Victims Crime Rights Week in the city of Ormond Beach, and reaffirm the city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year. And to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime, so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you so much, Evelyn, for all you do.
(Applause)
Thank you so much for your continued support for this proclamation. Thank you to all the Commissioners. I just love Ormond Beach and everything that we achieve here.
Awesome. Well, we're gonna get a picture in just a second here, but none of it works without people who care in the positions where it matters. And you have a huge heart for helping our victims. The Chief has told me about your work. I've seen your work, and it's a huge benefit to the city of Ormond Beach to have someone as qualified, caring, and committed as you. And so it's an honor to prevent you with that proclamation. So if we'll gather together, we'll grab a quick picture. The minutes have been sent to the Commission for review and posted to the city's website. These are the March 16, 2021 Regular City Commission meeting. A move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. And we'll show those approved unanimously. The following items are community redevelopment items. The City Commission serves as the CRA agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we'll recess the City Commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. I will open the public hearings and ask the Secretary to read 7A.
Resolution number 2021-65, a resolution of the City Commission, also acting as a community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the First Amendment to the City of Ormond Beach Building Improvement Grant Program, grant agreement between the city agency and Hija Ha LLC to extend the expiration date thereof to May 17, 2022, to the agreement, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-65, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of resolution number 2021-65.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. We will close the public hearings and reconvene the City Commission meeting. At this time, we are on 8A, the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Resolution number 2021-70, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the existing agreement. Oh, sorry.
Yep. No, no worries. Nobody wanted to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
And Mayor Partington?
Yes, thank you. And at this time, if there are any Commissioners who would like to make any comments on any consent agenda items, I see Commissioner Kent will start with that.
Yes, just Item A. Ms. Burt, not only am I excited, but a tremendous number of people in Ormond Beach are excited about what's going to take place on that property. Again, please tell Mr. Jones, thank you so much for his investment in Ormond Beach, our community, and, in this case, Zone 2. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, I just, Item D, I just wanted to let people know that the, that Granada Boulevard at the railroad will be closed from Saturday morning, 6:00 AM, until Wednesday morning, 6:00 AM, to rebuild that rail crossing. So I don't think, seems to me, almost nobody knows that. I haven't heard it on the news. I haven't heard it being talked about. So spread the word, Granada will be closed for four days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
Thank you for making sure that message gets out. And Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment about Item H, about the SANK Jim expansion. I know this is going to help so many children. They're gonna love all the new equipment that they're gonna get to use. It's just a wonderful way for us to improve our city, is to give our children a safe place to go after school and on the weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move to public hearings. At this time, I'll open the public hearings, ask our City Clerk to read 9A by title only.
Ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance vacating a portion of Flagler Road abutting 1480 North US Highway 1, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recidation and transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-11 by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. At the last meeting, there was a notice of intent for the right-of-way vacation. This is the actual vacation action. If you recall, the property's at 1480 North US Highway 1. The section being vacated is a five-foot segment of Flagler Road. This is the site plan showing the requested vacation. The project is undergoing site plan review, was recommended approval for, by the planning board, and this is the sketch that's in your exhibit. Staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way vacation. There is no current or future public use of the five feet. We're available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Stevens? Thank you. I have one card, thank you, Stevens, from Tim Grigsby.
Hello, my name is Tim Grigsby, 1206 Ormond, Overbrook Drive, Ormond Beach, Florida. I have an issue with vacating the property for Flagler and two unnamed alleys, because we had a stormwater astroplan study that's been in the works for over two years. And one of the resolutions fixes for the stormwater problem we have out there would to be used this right-of-way for stormwater storage. So if we vacate this and give it to Ace Hardware for their purposes, it will no longer be available. And speaking of the stormwater study, even though it's two years in the making and we paid $75,000 for it, the recommendations just calls for another $75,000 stormwater study. So if we continue to develop this property and keep kicking the ball, kicking the can down the road, doing more studies and paying more money for consultants while the problem gets worse, then we won't have any way to fix it other than to do something like, something drastic, like put in a stormwater lift station or something like that. So I think that we should reserve this property for the needed purpose of solving the stormwater in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards.
I'll move Ordinance 2021-11.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Kate, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we move to 9B.
Ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance vacating two unnamed alleys lying between lots 1 to 30, Block 59, National Crime Subdivision within the property at 1480 North US Highway 1, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recidation and transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-12 by title, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to give us a brief background on this item as well.
Good evening. Again, this is the property at 1480 North US Highway 1, shown here in the Hatch area. The plat that was, occurred in this area, occurred in 1926. So there's a lot of former alleys and right-of-way that as the land is being developed today is no longer necessary. The two alleys are in the shape, almost like a T, through the middle of the property. There, again, there is no public use, current or future, for the subject area, and staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way vacation.
Thank you, Stevens. Any questions for Stevens?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kent?
Yep. I just, I just want to say to the Gross family, I have known you all a long time, and it is extremely impressive that your father is going to continue to invest in the city of Ormond Beach and provide a great place for people to get things that they need and provide jobs. And for that, I say, I say thank you, and please tell your dad I say thank you as well. I appreciate you guys.
Anyone else? Thank you. And please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings. First reading of ordinances, 10A.
Ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, amending Article 1, General Employees Pension Plan of Chapter 16, pensions and retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section 16-6, benefit amounts and eligibility, amending Section 16-17, minimum distribution of benefits, providing for compliance with the Secure Act, providing severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-13, read by title only.
Thank you. I do not have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-13.
Second the motion.
Any discussion?
I would just like, Kelly, to reaffirm that this is basically administrative cleanup.
That was my understanding. But Kelly, could you just give us a brief synopsis?
Yeah, so the Secure Act requires this. This is the minimum distribution rule. It had been 70 and 1/2, where you'd have to take a minimum distribution of your pension. It's been raised to 72. So you'll see this in this ordinance as well as the one for fire and for police. All three need to be changed.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, and thanks for clarifying that. Unless there's any other discussion, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10B.
Ordinance number 2021-14, an ordinance of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, amending Article 3, Firefighters Pension Trust Fund of Chapter 16, pensions and retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section 16-44, contributions, amending Section 16-45, benefit amounts and eligibility, amending Section 16-46, pre-retirement death, amending Section 16-55, minimum distribution of benefits, providing for compliance with the Secure Act, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-14, read by title only.
Thank you. I have no cards.
I'll move Ordinance 2021-14.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10C.
Ordinance number 2021-15, an ordinance of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, amending Article 4, Police Officers Pension Trust Fund of Chapter 16, pensions and retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section 16-76, benefit amounts and eligibility, amending Section 16-86, minimum distribution of benefits, providing for compliance with Secure Act, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-15, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, no cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-15.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Kate, you did great. Didn't mean to drag you along kicking and screaming there, but thank you for staying with us. Now we are at reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start tonight with Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I have a couple updates for you tonight. First of all, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the committee met with Barth Associates last week. They visited all 53 parks and evaluated each site to determine current needs and potential improvements. The first master plan public meeting was also held last week. There were approximately 40 residents in person and 20 online that attended virtually. And so it was a very successful meeting. It was really just an introduction of the process, informational only. Barth and Associates completed individual interviews as well and focus group meetings with all of you, the City Commission, with the City Manager and myself, also with the Leisure Services Advisory Board and Quality of Life Advisory Board. The statistically valid survey and the electronic survey are in the final draft process. They're incorporating all of the feedback they received over the last week or so, and those surveys will go out to residents next week. The Florence Street On Street Parking, construction for that project commenced yesterday. It will take approximately 90 days to complete. These are the additional parking spaces located behind the old Julians that are being installed to provide 19 additional public parking spaces in that area. And so that's exciting. We have a McDonald House update, which I assure you, continue to see as you drive by. It looks fantastic. They're making progress. There was a meeting last week to update. They are three weeks ahead of their original schedule. And they're continuing to remove and replace the east and west wall siding and framing. That should be completed sometime in June. We'll revisit the budget next month and work on a proposal for the next phase of the work after that. The next phase would be the north elevation and east and west walls. Commissioner Selby mentioned the street closure, the Granada Railroad Crossing closure. Just wanted you all to know that was moved up by one week, so we have a little bit of short notice on that due to Jeep Week. They didn't want to close that road during Jeep Week, which is the following week. But our, Jen, our PIO, is pushing that out on social media to all our residents and issuing a press release. We're trying to get the communication out as much as possible on that. out as much as possible on that so our residents are aware, and the detour route will be published with a map as well. And then lastly, I just want to congratulate Kate for getting through her first commission meeting. I know you all have seen her bio, but we're just so excited to have her. She's got over 15 years of city clerk experience, and she is a certified master municipal clerk, which is just, you know, a great accolade for her. So, welcome, Kate. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for the Assistant City Manager? City Attorney, thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Persis.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to go first here. I just want to echo a welcome to you, Kate, for, you know, being with us here in Ormond Beach. You're in a great city. It's just, you're gonna be working with just amazing people and staff, and we're just really welcome to, welcome, you know, want you to feel very welcome here. So, just wanted to say that. And I had the opportunity to attend the retirement of James Doggett. He was one of our police officers for 26 years. It was just a great, great celebration of his career. I really enjoyed it. And I also got to attend the swearing-in of a new police officer from New York City, right, you know, a police officer that worked in New York City is kinda, to me, that's kinda interesting to talk and, you know, meet them. And his name is Mark Pettavallano. I think I said that right, Chief? Okay. And he's just a great guy. Met his wife and son, and they're just a welcome, another welcome addition to our city. So, and I also was able to attend the Zoom meeting that Bill put on, Bill Denny, who's here in the audience. And I just want to thank you all for, you and Linda, for continuing to do that and bringing people together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone had a happy Easter. Saturday, I attended Rockin' for Ricky, which was an event to raise funds for Ricky Elkins, and everyone in the city knows what happened to him and how sad it is. And I just want to thank everyone who gave and donated. They're truly doing the Lord's work, and it's gonna go for a good cause. And so, with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to also welcome you, Kate, to the City of Ormond Beach. And Colby, it's great to see you again also. You're in great tutelage hands here, you know, but your credentials speak for themselves also. So, we're, we're very excited to have you. And I just wanted to mention, I may have said it to the commission in the past, but having Jim Cameron here with his beautiful wife Rita. Jim started 38 years ago at the Daytona Beach Area Chamber of Commerce. And there are two other people in the greater Ormond Beach area, or in Ormond Beach, actually, who started the same time. And one is Gigi Galloway, who serves on our planning board, and the other is me. The three of us all started within about a month of each other at the, at the Daytona Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce. I was the convention and tourism director. Gigi was the membership director. And, you know, I went on to other things, you know, after three years or so. Gigi was there, I think, four or five years and went on to other things. And, but Jim stuck it out, and he's getting pretty good at the job now, too, you know, after, they're gonna, but they have big shoes to fill. I don't know what they're gonna do to, but it's amazing. I would just tell one little story about Jim. We were, I was with Jim. We were up in Tip O'Neill's office in Washington, DC. And Jim, you know, being from Alabama, and, oh, and by the way, on that proclamation, because my kids and my money went to Florida, that Roll Tide thing was, you know, that was, but I loved Jim, you know, 38 years. It is the SEC. So, we're, we're in Tip O'Neill's office, and Jim's the only guy I know who can turn the name Jim into a two-syllable word. And Tip says, "Well, GM, nice to meet you." But I love you, Jim. We're, we're happy that we're gonna be able to still see you, you know, now in the private sector, and thanks for all your service over the years. And also to Shannon and Stacy and Scott, you know, thanks for coming. Let Jeff know. I don't know what he's doing. I mean, I hope he's out of town or something, you know, but he's in good hands in any case. Yeah, it's very exciting to see you all opening your second store, and we wish you the absolute best. What a, you know, your store is fantastic. I mean, ever since you guys have taken that over, just the quality of service, the quantity of merchandise is unbelievable. I mean, it's, it's, I was there three times on Sunday on one project, which I think is more a reflection of my lack of ability to get a plumbing project done than, but everybody was incredibly helpful, and, and I appreciate it very much. You provide a great service to the community, and you're gonna provide a great service to the folks on the northern end of our community also. So, thank you. Have a good evening. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Commissioner Kent?
Mr. Selby, I really enjoyed your comments, and I'll, I'll kind of tag on two of those. The first one is about the Gross family. You talk about the products they have. They carry Duke Cannon Soap and Duke Cannon Beard Balm, which, you know, for a man, it just, I don't know if it gets any better for, for, you know, manly products. It's, it's good stuff. So, I wanted to throw that plug out there for Duke Cannon and Ace Hardware. And the second one, I'll leave for last. But Claire, you did great without Joyce. And Kate, your first meeting was a success. Colby, you already know how much I'm gonna miss you. Jen Elston, you have been a champion for Ormond Beach residents to get vaccinated, and you have helped a lot of people. And for that, I say thank you, not just from the Kent family, but the teacher family in Ormond Beach. You've helped a lot of people, and, and that's powerful, good stuff. So, thank you for that. Randy Hayes, listen, you are absolutely one of the best things in Ormond Beach as far as an employee goes. And I got aggravated when I found out your time, a lot of your time off that you took, you spent working on city issues, you know. The whole idea of taking time off is to go and enjoy. So, maybe, maybe next time. But, but you are, you are incredible at what you do and a great bargain for the Ormond Beach residents, and you are a champion for not only the City of Ormond Beach, but for this commission and for these residents. And I love how you defend your city viciously. Thank you. And last but not least, Commissioner Selby, it was your comment about Jim Cameron. And I met Jim about 18 years ago. And Jim, I can give you truly one of the highest compliments that I can give someone, and that is, you've always been a true gentleman around me and around my wife and around my, my children. And for that, I say thank you. And, you know, Daytona Beach is our sister city, and you've always been consistent coming to Ormond Beach to try to help Ormond Beach as well. And it just goes to show what kind of person you are and what kind of gentleman you are. I wish you nothing but success, and congratulations on your, on your retirement. 38 years is something to be extremely proud of. And Commissioner Selby, I love that history. I had no idea you worked there, and Gigi Galloway worked there. And I really appreciate you, you sharing that with everybody here tonight. Jim, congratulations and good night, everybody.
Very well. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.